Hello, my name is Bill Ferguson and I'm running to be your Town Councilor as part of the new Groton Independent Party. I want to serve the great town of Groton after having lived here for nearly thirty years. This town has served as home for me and my two children, and I feel it is my time to give back to this community that has given my family so much. I've served Groton for the past ten years in a variety of roles: President of Mystic and No Ink Library Board, President Downtown Mystic Merchants, being part of the Committee to Improve Mystic Parking, and in my current role as Groton Historic District Commissioner. I'm very proud to share that wherever I have served, the community has seen growth and progress. The library saw its budget expanded, Mystic has seen growth in parking opportunities, and Downtown Mystic has seen a growth in business like no other time in its history. And finally, the Eastern Connecticut Chamber of Commerce, a few years ago, named me Tourism Leader of the Year in recognition of this volunteer work I did. But these accomplishments are in the past. I'm running now to do work for the future of Groton. I sit before you today to share my goals and vision of what I can do as a Town Councilor serving you, my Groton neighbor. The current Town Council has had the opportunity to make the changes our community has asked for. However, instead, taxes have increased and business development has stagnated. We need people to serve this town who are going to make growth happen. I am that person. As my work with the merchants has shown, I'm pro-business. We've seen Downtown Mystic become a culinary destination, and the surrounding businesses have benefited from many successful restaurants. In Groton, we have two great industrial giants that employ many amazing Groton workers. We need to continue to grow businesses around these giants and increase the tax base for the town. We need to bring transparency to our government. I am not only pro-economic development, but also pro-affordable housing development. I want those who work in Groton to live in Groton, shop in Groton, and be entertained in Groton. But I want all these forms of development to be done in a way that you, the voters, feel like you've been listened to, heard, and given a chance to understand all views. And when all this happens, there is transparency in the government. Town officials need to be clear and transparent in their decision-making. It is my goal to bring more community discussion, community involvement, and committee membership, and more basic transparency in how and why decisions are made. So this is me, a guy who's known in his neighborhood for posting dad jokes on a chalkboard during the pandemic, the co-founder of Float Swella, a great Mystic River concert we hold each summer, a guy who's known for his commitment to being a caring neighbor, a guy who wants to serve you, the Groton voter, so that I may leave this town better than how I found it. This election day, come out and cast your vote for me, Bill Ferguson, so that I may serve as your next Town Councilor. Thank you, and remember to vote Row C on November 7th.
Hi, I'm Juliette Parker. Let me tell you a bit about myself. I grew up in Puconic Bridge as the oldest of six children and graduated from Fitch High School in 1991. I raised my daughters in the city of Groton, one is a college graduate and the other's currently a senior in college. I have a bachelor's degree in legal studies. I have served as the City of Groton's Police Chief's Administrative Secretary for sixteen years. I am a Connecticut Certified Municipal Official. I have significant volunteer experience ranging from Groton Public Schools PTOs, Girl Scout Co-Leader, church volunteer, Groton Public Library, United Way Mobile Food Pantry Volunteer, and various other community groups. I am running for reelection for Town Council. I was on the RTM District Two for four years, 2013, 2017, and have been on the council since 2017. As a Town Councilor, I am the liaison to TVCCA and for the Board of Ed, Town Council, City Council, and RTM Committee. My experience as a TVCCA Board Member has taught me that housing and food insecurity are significant problems in New London County. My reasons for running are to continue my commitment to the town and to continue to be a role model to others to show that I am part of the solution. "The greatness of a community is most accurately measured by the compassionate actions of its members." Coretta Scott King. Please vote for me, Juliette Parker, on November 7th. Thank you.
Hello, Groton neighbors and community members. I'm Pantaya Amriz, and I'm excited to share with you my candidacy for the Groton Town Council. I'm not your typical politician. I'm a wife and a mom to two amazing kids, a three-year-old daughter and a two-year-old son. Like any parent, I want the best for them, and I want them to be proud to call Groton home. That's why I'm running for the Town Council. Let me tell you a bit about my Groton story. When I met my husband, Tommy, he was clear about one thing: He is a Groton native and he's here to stay. He was born and raised in Groton and has dedicated his life to his family's Christmas tree farm, and he would never leave. Rather than just accepting it, I embraced it, and I decided to be a part of making Groton even better. Now, I may not be a seasoned politician, and I have never run for office, but I bring a fresh perspective, one that allows me to work collaboratively with other council members. My life's journey has been quite the ride. I was born in Tehran, Iran, and came to the United States when I was three. Growing up, I moved around from San Diego to Los Angeles to Boston. These experiences have given me a unique insight into the challenges faced by families in these tough economic times. My mother, an immigrant, left everything behind to come to the United States and worked incredibly hard to make a better life for us. As a single mother, she held three jobs, spending her mornings at the cafeteria in the local middle school, her afternoons at a retail store, and spent the early hours of the morning as a newspaper carrier. And she did all of this while learning English as a second language and raising her children. She modeled for me the values of integrity, hard work, and grit. Doing what you say you're going to do, when you say you're going to do it, and not giving up on your goals. These are the values I intend to bring to the Town Council. As a Town Council member, my commitment is clear. I want to maintain the history of greatness Groton has enjoyed for generations to come. I'll work to ensure responsible growth while protecting our neighborhoods. I'll be a strong advocate for the safety and success of our residents and businesses. Our police departments, firefighters, and first responders are vital, and I'll work hard to make sure they have the resources they need to keep Groton safe. As a small business owner, I get the struggles and successes of local businesses. I'll stand up for them and the jobs they create. Affordable housing is a concern for many. I'm passionate about increasing affordable housing options in Groton so that our community remains accessible to everyone. And when it comes to taxes, I'll fight for fiscal responsibility so you won't see any unnecessary increases. At the heart of my dedication is the vision of a Groton where our children have endless opportunities. As a Town Council member, I'll work to make this vision a reality. I promise to approach every decision with openness, civility, and a commitment to preserve the essence of our community. When we work together, there's nothing we can't achieve. My journey has brought me here, to this town, to this moment. On November 7th, I humbly ask for your vote to serve as your Town Council member, ready to serve our community.
Hi, my name is Genevieve Surf, and I'm running for Town Council on the slate of our brand-new party in Groton, the Groton Independence. First thing I'd like to do is to clarify how you can vote for us. There are nine people running for Town Council on Row A, five on Row B, and the five of us on Row C. You can choose any nine of the nineteen people. They can be on the same or different rows or columns. Now about myself. I was born and raised in Norwich and Montreal, spending my summers in Groton, Long Point. I went to the Williams School and to Connecticut College where I got a BA in physics astronomy. And I moved to New York when I married. I went to Columbia University because I wanted to study the brain, and ended up getting a PhD in electrical engineering, doing my research at Mount Sinai Hospital on healing children's bone fractures with electromagnetic fields. I was the first woman assistant professor in the AI department at Columbia. I then got a postdoc at the IBM Watson Labs where the new science of AI was taking off. This was in 1995. So I've been on what is now an AI tsunami for thirty-eight years. I can't wait to apply some of this technology to our town knowledge base so that all of you can find all the key information you want as easily as asking Google where the closest gas station is. You should be able to get on the town website and ask, "Where's this year's budget book? And how much are we spending on consultants?" And have Chat Groton take you right there. I'm also a huge proponent of more STEM in our schools as our kids are already so smart with tech. Are eager to get all those great new tech jobs at EB. I moved back to Groton in 2000 while I was still working for Verizon from home on AI web-based applications and system architecture, earning four patents, and lucky to finish out my twenty-three years then. I put credentials here because I want to show that I have the credentials to do this job. Also, when I came back to Groton, I met the extraordinary Priscilla Pratt, President of Groton Open Space Association, GOSEP. She asked me to join GOSEP's board, where I served as treasurer for the next seven years. She also convinced me to join her in delivering my first citizen petition to the Town Council, advocating in favor of a new, very expensive animal shelter. This was my crude introduction to politics. The dogs really needed a new home, but with a price tag of $1.2 million, most of the taxpayers, who were pet lovers but couldn't swallow the price tag, balked. Priscilla also urged me to get on the RTM, where I learned to make friends and count votes. I'm now serving my fourth term on the RTM after serving one term, 2013 to 2015, on the Town Council. I thought I'd retired happily. Wrong. Two years ago, I got involved again over the disastrous sale of the state-owned Mystic Oral School to a man named Ressler, who had been convicted of bribing public officials and committing fraud with a local trade union. His plan for the property had little detail, tons of TIF, tax extensive financing, on part of the Groton Town Council, but no accountability, nothing but PowerPoint slides and big words. I was in disbelief that the council had signed off on this and was only discussing it in executive sessions. There's been a lot of water under the dam since then, too much of it unhealthy for Groton. The current Town Council, almost all Democrats, had almost no experience in local politics when they were elected. This is most obvious in the way they almost unilaterally approve everything Groton Town staff puts in front of them. They have even attempted to change the membership of our excellent Planning and Zoning Commission, who have thankfully applied their experience and good judgment to restrain the council's more reckless plans. The council also refused to implement a phasing of our property values, an optional state statute, which is essentially when property revaluations coincide with a steep increase in residential property values, as was the case in the last revow. This costs the residential taxpayers millions. Democracy's been trampled by the current Groton Town Council, where debate is being curtailed because special interests have been privileged and given special access while public interest has been silenced. We independents believed in thorough debate on issues, respectful inclusion of community advocates, common sense, and compromise. We all really love Groton and wanted to step into the future with vision while maintaining a charm and maritime agricultural character that we treasure. Again, I'm Genevieve Surf, running for Town Council on Row C. Please vote for me on November 7th.
Hello, Groton. My name is Adam Pacino. I'm currently a district representative on your RTM, and I'm running for a seat on your Town Council. I've been married to my beautiful bride Melissa for thirty-seven years. We have three grown children and four beautiful grandchildren. I'm also the owner of a small business right here in Groton. I spent twenty-five years in the US Armed Forces. I served thirteen in the Navy Seabees, where I traveled to places like Guam, Spain, and Mogadishu, Somalia. I spent nine in the Coast Guard, serving on the Coast Guard Cutter Eagle and the Coast Guard Cutter Dallas, taking me on a deployment to Haiti and Gitmo, and another one to the Northern Mediterranean ports of Sicily and Croatia. I also served three years in the Connecticut Army National Guard as a supply sergeant, traveling to far-off places like Stone's Ranch and Camp Niantic. I worked another eight and a half years at the Public Works Department on the subbase, serving our warfighters, and six of those years as the chief union steward for the Metal Trades Council, serving our union members. I'm the only candidate who is bringing a military veteran's perspective to the Town Council. My big focus points are education, downtown Mystic parking, open spaces, and keeping our mill rate as steady and as low as possible. The town property reuse policy needs to be a document that is easy for both the developers and town staff to negotiate. We don't need our town staff jumping through unnecessary hoops to then have the developers move on to an easier town to deal with, taking that lost revenue with them, leaving our town staff's hard work wasted. I believe a little spending on parks and services and activities would draw in more residents to Groton, and thus more businesses will want to come to Groton. The more people, the more businesses, the more tax revenue, and the lower our taxes will be. I hope you can support my bid for Town Council, and please don't forget to vote. November 7th, polls are open from 6:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Thank you very much for your time.
Hello, my name is Harry Watson, and I'm a Town Council candidate for the upcoming election, November 7th. For this taping, I have five minutes or less to introduce myself and to hopefully convince you to vote for me. First, about myself, then some highlights of what I bring to the voters as a candidate. Myself, I moved to Groton in 1983 and retired from Pfizer in 2003. In retirement, I attended Eastern Connecticut State University, completing a bachelor's degree in 2007 at the age of fifty-eight. After this, I worked in the Groton Schools as a substitute teacher until 2020, and I had a preference of working with children in preschool through third grade. My wife, Kim Shepherdson Watson, currently serves as the chairperson of Groton's Board of Education. Kim and I have three children, Hannah, Luke, and Sam, all three of which graduated from Fitch High School. Fitch provided our children with a great foundation to go on and receive a higher education. Our family is active members of Union Baptist Church in Mystic. As for experience, overlapping my career and family, I served on Groton's Town Council for twenty-seven years, from 1990 to 2017. Six of those years, 2003 to 2009, I was fortunate enough to serve as your mayor. Some examples of my community-related experience include Ledgely Health District, I coached Groton youth sports, I was on the Subbase Realignment Coalition, shell fishing in Groton, the Southeastern Connecticut Water Authority, the Lighthouse Vocational Education Board of Directors, and Education Liaison Committee with our Board of Education, RTM, and City Council. I currently serve on the Groton Representative Town Meeting as a District Two representative. In closing, I am excited about the possibility of serving on the Town Council again. Having served Groton for over thirty years, I believe that I will bring the voice of experience to the Town Council. I care a great deal about our community and our quality of life. Groton's a great place to visit, but even a better place to live. It's been an honor to serve Groton for so long, and I would like to return to the Town Council. When voting on November 7th, please choose Harry Watson on the ballot. Anybody that would like to talk or has questions, please feel free to call or email me. My cellphone number is 860-705-4551, and my email address is hwatson5866@gmail.com. My thanks to the Groton Library for making available this time to speak.
Hello, Groton. My name is Scott Westervelt, and I serve on your Groton Town Council. Let me emphasize that. I serve on your Groton Town Council, and I am running for a second term as a Groton Independent. I worked for the City of New Haven as the Traffic Signal Superintendent. Basically, our crew keeps nearly three hundred traffic signals running and eleven thousand streetlights on. This is no small task, and at times can be trying. I only say this because I know that we all have many responsibilities to our families and our communities. I am originally from North Carolina, and after high school, I decided to join the Navy. Following in both my mother and father's footsteps, I wanted to do more than Charlotte had to offer me at the time. The Navy brought me to Groton, and I have never looked back. I served on the USS Dallas and was honorably discharged in 1988. Staying in Groton, I worked for an outside contractor at Electric Boat. It was a very busy time, and the shipyard was booming. I met so many folks at EB from all over southeastern Connecticut, Rhode Island, and even Massachusetts. But then, the Trident II program I was working on was canceled, with I believe five boats left to be built. The Russians had given up, the Cold War was over, and suddenly I was unemployed, along with many other folks, as the working population at EB dwindled to, I believe, its lowest point in decades. Groton was hit hard by this, and you could see it with the stores closing and the buildings becoming vacant. I had been taking classes at Three Rivers and Yukon Avery Point, receiving an AS in general engineering. This is what brought me to what I call playing in traffic, but honestly, it is a serious and fulfilling job. My wife and I started our family after I got out of the Navy, and we have been fully entrenched in Groton for thirty-nine years. We have raised three children, all of whom have gone through the Groton Public School system, recognizing that the quality of education is really unmatched. I have volunteered with coaching T-ball, soccer, and youth wrestling. We also volunteered for many years in scouting, with my serving as Cub Master for PAC-34 and as a committee member for Troop Two. Our latest volunteer efforts have been with the Eastern Connecticut Symphony Youth Orchestra. Come to think of it, Town Council is also a volunteer effort, albeit one that the citizens of Groton have elected and entrusted us to fill. My initial run for Town Council was, I will admit, reactionary. I and folks working with me felt that we were not being heard and that the previous Town Councils and town staff had set the town on a collision course with a developer and development that would destroy a part of Groton. As I got involved and started attending the Town Council meetings, it became very apparent that councilors were divided and hostile, not only to each other, but to us, the constituency. I felt then that Groton deserved better, and I still feel today that there is work to be done. I am running again for Town Council because I want to see Groton thriving again, much like it was when I first arrived. I'd like to see vacant storefronts turned into businesses. I feel that affordable housing and new home starts are important on Groton's path to recovery. I was shocked early on in this term on the Town Council to find that new home starts in the previous year were basically nonexistent. If I recall, there may have been only one. Some may blame that on COVID, but I think the trend downward had already begun. If we want to attract new folks to Groton, we have got to give folks a reason to come to Groton, and it can't be just because they got a new job at EB. Those folks can live anywhere in the area. We have got to make our town where they want to live and raise their families. We can do this with open space, coastal access, and parks, and with responsible development within the guidelines of the Plan of Conservation and Development, and with input from the citizens, especially those who would be most affected. Development can and should promote a sense of community. We can also do this with budget reform. We can't just keep raising taxes. We can all do this by the protection of town-owned properties, whether being preserved as open space or for future sale. These are an asset, and they need to be protected. As a Town Council, we need to promote transparency. We need to hear and acknowledge our citizens and promote a welcoming atmosphere. Groton deserves better. Those running with me on the independent slate are committed to change. We are committed to making Groton better. We are committed to the people of Groton. Please vote Row C this election. Thank you.
Greetings. My name is Portia Bordelon, and I'm proud to be an incumbent candidate for the Groton Town Council. I'm a forty-three-year-old Fitch graduate, mother of two sons, one who is a submariner in the United States Navy stationed here in Groton, Connecticut, another who is a Fitch High School senior and a member of the marching band, fencing, track and field teams, as well as a very first naval junior ROTC class this year. I was elected to the RTM in 2017, appointed to fill a vacancy on the Town Council in 2019, and elected to that seat later that year. Since I've been on the council, I have served on the Public Safety Committee, Long-Term Recovery Committee, and a number of task forces focused on athletic fields, short-term rentals, and the Groton Long Point Bridge. Just this past term, it was my referral that prompted the mayor to form a property reuse committee on which I also serve. In this most recent term, I've advocated for mindful, careful allocation of funds received by the town for projects and initiatives that would directly impact and improve the lives of folks in the community. I've also advocated for AED machines and town facility solar-powered trash and recycling compactors, and inclusive outreach for grant awards to nonprofit community service providers. Outside of public office, I am a board member for the No Ink Community Support Services, an organization that provides support to families. Also, from 2019 to 2020, I served as a community ambassador with the Ledgely Health District. As an elected representative, I have constantly and consistently worked to improve accessibility and assistance to support services. I believe in government for the people, by the people. I believe in equitable, enriching, and individualized education in our schools, creating dependable, sustainable, community-rooted, and environmentally responsible economic growth. I also believe in preserving open space, supporting seniors, youth, the military, and their families, along with ensuring all citizens of all districts and the city, town, and subdivisions feel their interests are fairly represented by local elected officials. My record in public service is a testimony to the unique mix of courageous, creative, and critical thinking I have brought to the Town Council. Representing the dynamic and diverse tapestry of people and interests in this municipality in a fair and faithful fashion has been a challenge as it has been rewarding. I hope to have earned your support and continue another term. If reelected, I will continue to advocate for actions that will grow the grand list in a smart, environmentally responsible, community-rooted, and socially sustainable manner, with small business, local contractors, and project labor agreements as a priority. I will advocate for equitable management of resources across all districts of the town and serve as a frank, open, honest broker of any discussion on issues that concern the citizens. The Town Council is a deliberate body that should serve as a conduit for civil conversation amongst the citizens of this town. While it is important for a councilor to have goals and ambitions for the town, I do not believe it is essential to have rigid agendas in mind. The most important functions for a councilor are to serve as an honest broker of information, to be a frank and efficient facilitator of civil conversation, and to engage with the public as a responsive representative of the constituents. To perform these functions faithfully, one must have one must have a passion for the people and value the diversity of voices, vocations, that exists in this town. My record on the RTM Town Council, along with my overall experience in life leading up to and through this past term and current campaign, testify to the fact that these qualities resonate within me. I am excited and eager to continue to provide positive energy for this town, to give back to the community in which I was raised, came of age, and chose to stay to start my own family. As an elected representative, I believe it is my primary responsibility to give voice to the concerns and interests of the constituents. In this duty, I promise to continue to represent, be present, passionate, and persistent. I promise to continue to be your voice on the Council. Please consider giving me your vote. I encourage all Groton citizens to get out and vote on Tuesday, November seventh, and I hope to have earned your support. You can find me on the ballot in position four A. A vote for Portia is a vote for progress. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Bruce McDermott. I am a candidate for the Groton Town Council as an independent, and I would like to ask for your vote, and why? Because I believe the Town Council has strayed far from its mission. They have lost their empathy for the citizens. They are bent on unbridled growth, which has caused the citizens affected to fight their decisions. I use the Mystic Oral School, the Data Center, short-term rentals, and the Bradford Manor's health concerns as examples. There are others. I maintain that none of these would have risen to the protests we have seen if we had had people with real business experience on the Town Council or had citizens uppermost in their mind. I have read some of these documents, and they never should have made it to where they did. In addition, we independents want public comment at every meeting with response from councilors to questions. Limiting comment to one meeting without response from the Council is dismissive and shows a lack of empathy by this Council. The Council must recognize citizens' desires regarding the reuse of town-owned property. The majority of the Council rejects suggestions from the public because they want no dissent from their personal bias and agenda. The Data Center, the Mystic Oral School Project, and similar economic development must have public hearings before agreements are signed, while keeping the developer parties anonymous. Not doing it this way has pitted the citizenry against our town government at every turn, as exemplified by the committees of citizens being formed to combat egregious development fiascos at the cost of quality of life. Moreover, there is a decided lack of business acumen in these previous debacles. As mentioned, a cursory reading of the documents reveals their shortcomings for Groton. Bradford Manor has had mold problems for years, and Groton has done nothing about it. It should have been dealt with long ago. Government is supposed to protect you, and it failed here. We need full disclosure, transparency, and an itemization of legal bills. We must compare competitive legal services. Our current legal people are directly responsible for some very poor decisions given to economic development and the Town Council. The Town Council simply reapproved the same legal firm that confirmed its biases. Taxes. Taxes must be based on a zero-based budget increase. This is the only rational approach to the continued rise in taxes. There are ways to keep a lid on certain areas. I have examined these as an RTM member. We simply have to have the courage to implement changes. Any short-term rental regulations or ordinance must require neighborhood integrity as an essential goal. Again, government must protect its citizens, including residential zoning. Otherwise, why even have residential zoning? This Council has aided and abetted our legal and economic development departments, who have turned our zoning definitions on their head. They have agreed with this flawed interpretation that businesses are allowed in residential zones. The Town Council nearly passed an ordinance bypassing our zoning commission. This STR policy is of immense importance for our community neighborhoods, yet it has never been reduced to writing. Our legal representative has confirmed that there is nothing in writing. Why? To more easily circumvent existing zoning? One can only speculate. Groton needs a light pollution and noise ordinance established. The American Medical Association has given several directives on this to so communities can have healthier outcomes with simple regulations, such as a maximum of three thousand K temperature for lighting. Beautification of Groton is an economic imperative for growth and requires funding. It works. How many times have we driven Route One and Route Twelve in town and wished for a more pleasant experience? Climate change is a real problem that requires concrete proposals to be enacted now. Thank you, and please vote for Row C for Independents.
Hello. My name is Jill Rusk, and I'm running for Groton Town Council. My husband and I have lived in Groton for over twenty-five years. Though we came here for the Navy, Groton quickly became our home. Groton is where we chose to raise our three now-adult children and to stay after military retirement. I've always believed it is important to do what I can to give back to my community. I served as ombudsman on the USS Connecticut for three years, providing information and support to families while their sailors were at sea. In two thousand fifteen, I was elected and served four years on the Groton City Council. I am currently on the Board of Trustees for the Bill Memorial Library. Since two thousand nineteen, I've been on the Representative Town Meeting, or RTM, representing my neighbors in District Three. And for the past two years, I've served as moderator. These experiences have taught me about leadership and responsible government, as well as a greater understanding of the complexity of the Groton community and our town and fire district taxes. I have a bachelor's degree in history and political science and have worked in social services for most of my life, and am currently employed by a nonprofit organization working to decrease food insecurity in New London County. I believe Groton should be a great place for all people to live, work, and play. According to a recent United Way report, forty percent of Groton residents struggle to meet their basic monthly needs. I am someone who understands that many in our community are struggling to pay their bills. As a councillor, we need to remember that when we do things that affect taxes, we need to be sensitive to all members of our community. To maintain services in Groton without increasing taxes, we must increase our tax base. We must be willing to look for new developments that are right for our community, support current residents, and encourage the growing number of people coming to work in Groton to make this their home as well. One of Groton's greatest assets is our open spaces. We have beautiful trails, beaches, and parks. I support the expansion of trails and bike routes in Groton. I've worked with both the city and town of Groton to develop new trails, and a highlight of this was serving on the committee that created the Sasekis Trail. In Groton, we have some of the best-trained and dedicated men and women in law enforcement looking out for us. I believe it is critical to keep an open dialogue between our residents and our police, and the chiefs agree. I've worked closely with them as Chair of the RTM Public Safety Committee, as well as on the Police and Community Together and Civilian Oversight Research Committee. I am a team player who believes in respect and working together across party lines to solve issues in our community. I believe that we can hear all opinions respectfully and openly. It would be my honor to serve you on Groton Town Council, and I respectfully ask for your vote. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Lauren Gothier, and I am a Groton Independent running for Town Council. I work as a contracts professional at Electric Boat, and I currently represent District Four on the Groton RTM, where I serve as Chair of the Community Development and Services Committee. I also serve on the State Contracting Standards Board, where I champion clean contracting and accountable state procurement. I graduated from UConn Avery Point with a bachelor's in maritime studies, and I earned my master's of public administration and a certificate in nonprofit management from UConn Department of Public Policy. My husband and I chose to start our family here in Groton because of its beautiful location, safe community, and amazing schools. We have two boys, one currently in the Groton Public School System. I love Groton. I believe in its potential, and I think our community deserves better leadership. I'm running for Town Council because I would like to see Groton be put on a responsible, future-focused path to sustainable growth. As a Groton Independent, ensuring that resources are used wisely, assets are protected, and citizen engagement is prioritized will be the guiding principles should I be elected to serve our community. The Groton Independent slate is dedicated to returning Groton back to the business of good governing. The current Town Council, under one-party rule of the Democrats, has obstructed transparency, reneged on contracts, entangled the town with a criminal developer, sidelined citizen concerns, and have embarrassed Groton with their nonstop bickering. Groton deserves better leadership. Each of the Groton Independents on the slate are committed to being true cooperative leaders. We are a nonpartisan group that understands that it takes everybody to build up a community. The Groton Independents have a platform that is both bold and achievable. We want to secure community-centered and community-advocated policies, such as an improved property reuse development policy, adopting light and noise pollution ordinances, and implementing a short-term rental policy. We believe the answers for the big questions Groton faces, such as affordable housing, public transportation, and growth at Electric Boat, can only be found through robust community engagement. One of my passions is government accountability and transparency. These are absolute priorities for the Groton Independents. The town has spent tens of thousands of taxpayer dollars fighting Freedom of Information Act requests and defending the current town councilors from alleged violations of the FOI. That's just not acceptable. To promote accountable and transparent government, the Groton Independents will institute public comment at every meeting, ensure there are public hearings on developments prior to selecting developers, and protect democratic dialogue by removing the procedural rules that limit the speech of councilors and conducting business in a way that promotes discussion, collaboration, and informed decision-making. As Groton is a coastal community, we must be resolute in protecting our town from the dangers of climate change and doing what we can to stop it. The Groton Independents are advocates for our environment. To do so, the Groton Independents will promote leveraging of regional resources to implement climate resiliency goals, provide resources to assist citizens with fuel efficiency improvements to their homes, and implement stormwater runoff policies to protect our homes and protect public infrastructure. But of course, Groton must remain affordable. Our families must be protected from fiscal mismanagement in town. The current Council has increased the town budget by over ten million dollars in the past five years, even while the grand list has stagnated. They chose not to implement a policy to smooth out tax hikes from the recent property revaluation. And the danger is that continued unnecessary increases in spending will drive the cost of living even higher if leadership does not change course. The Groton Independents will advocate for performance audits for all town departments to ensure that taxpayer dollars are being used productively. We will strive to place the town checkbook on the town website at frequent intervals for greater budgetary transparency. And lastly, the Groton Independents want to engage in long-term budget planning to reduce tax hikes on residents and better strategize for Groton's growth in order to realize the opportunities in front of us. The Groton Independents are experienced community leaders who love this town and want to see it thrive. And as a mother, I'm doing all I can to build a safe and beautiful community for my children. That is why I'm running for Town Council. I'm Lauren Gothier, and I'm asking for your vote this Tuesday, November seventh. Thank you.
Hello, Groton. I'm Rachel Franco, your Town Councilor. If you know me, you know I like to get things done. I don't just sit at the Council talking and talking. I help make things happen. So I'm going to cut through the typical speech particulars and share with you my Groton Top Ten list of proud accomplishments. Number ten. I had the idea to create the Groton Beautification Committee, a group of dedicated volunteers who are making Groton beautiful. Number nine. I successfully championed to increase Groton's rainy day fund from eleven to fifteen percent. Saving responsibly keeps Groton in a great position with the credit agencies and when emergencies arise. Number eight. I successfully advocated for lights at the middle school athletic fields. Number seven. During my tenure, we achieved more in terms of environmental protection than any previous Council. We also installed the first bike path in Groton. Number six. I helped create a veterans and war memorial committee that will oversee Groton's memorials and will hold community events. Number five. I worked on the William Sealy and Colonel Ledgerd School property sales, which will become apartments, complexes, and bring greatly needed housing to Groton. Number four. Working as a team, we distributed our Federal American Rescue Plan money. We invested in new sidewalks, Sutton Park, new lights and upgrades to the hockey rink, new outdoor lighted pickleball courts, upgraded baseball fields, and many more recreational and facility improvements. We also awarded hero pay to our police, firefighters, and ambulance crews for their service during COVID. Number three. I championed giving three years of money from opioid lawsuits to Groton's Community Speaks Out, which is fully staffed by volunteers. That means one hundred percent of the money will go directly to opioid and substance recovery efforts for those in need. Number two. Over my time on the Council, I have worked to keep our taxes flat. I am proud to say Groton has one of the lowest tax rates in the state of Connecticut. Number one. For so many years, residents in the Paquonic Bridge District have paid more than their fair share in fire district taxes, the highest district tax in the town. No one could find a solution. I said, "Let's figure this out," and brought the issue forward. We agreed to increase the money Groton receives from the state, called the pilot money, to the fire districts, especially Paquonic Bridge. Residents there should notice a decrease in their taxes next year. This policy was hailed by Fire Chief Driscoll as the biggest piece of legislation any Town Council has had before them that would so positively help the fire districts. I'm Rachel Franco, and that's what I'm about. I love and care about my hometown and the residents who live here. I hope I have earned your support, and on November seventh, you can find my name on Row A. Rachel Franco.
Hello, Groton friends and neighbors. My name is David McBride, and I'm a current Town Councilor seeking reelection to the Groton Town Council. I have resided in Groton since I was a kid, off and on during my college years, and permanently since nineteen ninety-nine. I have a bachelor's degree from Seton Hall and an MBA from UConn. I have over thirty years of experience in finance, government, management, small business, economic development, and nonprofits. These experiences include being the current Finance Director for the City of New London, the past Director of Finance for the Mohegan Tribe, the founder of the James Greenlee Memorial Scholarship Fund, and the past President, Treasurer, and Director of Public Works for Groton Long Point. I am also a part-owner of several family businesses, and I'm a part-time business faculty member at Mitchell College. On the Council, I have proven to be a dedicated, pragmatic, resident-focused, and fiscally-conservative councillor who acts professionally and makes decisions that are in the best long-term interest of the entire town. I have proven myself in numerous capacities, ranging from detailed reviews of the budget, supporting the proper use of ARPA funding, being the Chair of the Public Safety Committee, the Chair of the Property Reuse Committee, a member of the Personnel and Employment Committee, and performing the ongoing tasks and responsibilities of a councillor on a regular basis. There are numerous key initiatives I would like to pursue if reelected. I would like to ensure the numerous vacated school properties are brought forward to determine the best use for their properties. This needs to include a fair and transparent process that involves the entire Groton community. I would also like to focus on some housing initiatives, including establishing a rental assistance program, a first-time homebuyer's program, and the development of a detailed process to review all matters... and the development of a detailed process to review all matters pertaining to short-term rentals so that the council can properly address this important matter. I would also like to see the council perform a detailed review of the parking situation in downtown Mystic, which should include a review and discussion of all potential options and alternatives so that some solutions can actually be implemented to solve the parking issues before they become insurmountable. I would also like to focus some additional efforts on the economic development throughout the entire town. Excluding the prior year's revaluation, the town's Grand List over the past eight years has actually decreased. We need to focus on how to grow the Grand List, or the continued increase of the cost of the government will be borne by the residents via increased taxes, and no one will like that. I'd also like a more detailed review of the town's operating and capital budgets. ARPA funding has allowed the town to complete many initiatives. However, these funds are now encumbered, so the town is going to have very difficult decisions to make during this upcoming budget cycle. My experience in municipal budgeting will assist with this process. I've also sent a referral in for the council to consider hiring an additional employee specifically focused on grant matters. There is a tremendous amount of state and federal funding available, and this additional employee could and should assist in bringing more financial resources to the town. I've also made a referral for the town to develop and maintain a long-term, 10-plus-years consolidated cash flow that can be used to project how financial decisions that are being made today will impact the town and the mill rate in the future. I think it's integral that the town implement such a plan next year to assist with making the best financial decisions for the town. I've also submitted a referral for the establishment of a stormwater authority. The funds raised from the stormwater authority are received fairly and equitably from everyone across the town, including tax-exempt entities who currently do not pay taxes for services they receive from the town. These funds that are generated can then be used to provide funding for the numerous coastal resiliency initiatives the town is planning. I also firmly support establishing a Board of Education non-lapsing fund, as such has proven to have tremendous financial benefits in other municipalities and something I believe the Board of Ed and the council should review further as these funds can be used to offset any future Board of Ed budget increases. Groton residents, I am a team player who will continue to work for the greater good of the entire town. I have shown that I listen well to others, and I respect everyone's opinions. This leadership and my experience will prove beneficial if reelected to the Town Council. A vote for McBride is a vote for momentum in Groton. I look forward to serving you if I am provided the opportunity. Thank you in advance for your consideration.
Hi, my name is Dan Gieske. Since August 8, 2023, I have had the privilege of being your Town Councillor here in Groton. This November 7, I am kindly asking for your vote in the upcoming Groton Town Council election. I hope I can continue to be an energized and enthusiastic voice for our community. I have lived in Groton my whole life, and at 23, I am the youngest candidate on the ballot. However, do not confuse my youth with a lack of experience. In addition to serving on the council, I have always had great pride for this town and have been involved in Groton's government since I was 15. I served for two years as the student liaison to the Board of Education, and in 2021, I had the ability to be appointed to the Town of Groton's Fair Rank Commission. In addition to my service in the town, I have had the pleasure to work in Connecticut in either a campaign or office capacity for Congressman Joe Courtney, Lieutenant Governor Susan Bysowitz, and Groton's own state representatives Christine Conley and Joe Delacruz. In my time working for these distinguished leaders, I have learned how to get things done, lead and conduct myself with integrity, and serve the people. My involvement in town, experience working in government across Connecticut, my education, which includes a bachelor's degree in government and American Studies, and my love for Groton make me a candidate ready to work for you. A proud product of the Groton school system, I feel blessed to be raised in such a diverse community. I was taught to respect my neighbors regardless of their background and to know we all have a voice that brings a unique perspective. The lessons I learned from my neighbors and fellow citizens have made me passionate about helping others. I am running because my love for this community has made me want to serve the people who gave me the experience of living in a place I never want to leave. I seek to continue the proud traditions of Groton I was taught by preserving them for the ones who mentored me, my generation, and the generations of Groton citizens that come after me. On the council, I am seeking to continue the growth of all types of housing. The current council has done great work to market, sell, to vacant school properties that are adding to that supply. We still have four former school properties we can do this with or look at other options that fill community needs and wants. Housing, though, is a priority across town, and we need to continue to do this because Electric Boat is expanding its workforce. We need to make Groton a place where these workers can work, live, grow, and enjoy the beauty of life. Also by doing this, we are adding to the tax base, which allows residents' taxes to be stabilized, which the council in the past two years has done so, and I seek to preserve and continue that effort. I want to continue to address the impact of climate change by supporting efforts to make our town energy-efficient and protect it from increased floodings caused by rising sea levels. I also will continue to support our school system, police departments, libraries, human services, and parks and recreation so all Groton residents, like I have, can get the most out of what our town can offer. I am excited to continue the work that needs to be done, and I humbly ask for your vote in Box 8A this November 7 so I can continue to serve in the role of your Town Councillor, which has been the honor of my lifetime.